Good morning, everyone. So good to see everyone here today on this ninth day of January of 2024, first meeting of the new year. At this time, we are convening in council chambers for a work session regarding presentation and discussion on items that require consideration of the city and basically for this purposes, information for the general public, information for city council. And we wanted to get some information out. We have today with us Tony Williams from the Sheriff's Department. He works in the Texas Anti-Gang Unit. Tony's with the Police Department for about 12 or 13 years. The Lubbock Police Department has been at the Sheriff's Department for the last eight years, so 20 years of experience. Tony's got a lot of experience. I've known him a long time, and so we look forward to your presentation. And I guess your disclaimer is right off the bat, right, Tony?
Yes, sir. This is what they make me put up.
Is that our sheriff making sure this is information and this is not? This is an opinion of the presenter, is that right?
That's correct. I answer to DEA. I'm also a group supervisor with DEA. I answer to LPD, Lubbock County, ATF, HSI. So this will be my opinion during this presentation, and I will do my best. I don't operate in this world, so I'll do my best to stay professional.
All right, so we'll get you started, Tony. Thanks for your wife pressing your shirt and looking really nice today. I know she made sure you looked really, really pretty this morning. If you would for us, because we are going to be on camera, I know you like to move around, but make sure you stay on that mic so we can get all this recorded. I think the video guys like me to say that. And so with that, we'll turn it over to you, sir. Thank you for being here.
All right, thanks for having me. Also, I have Melissa Roscoe. She is our analyst with TAG and HIDA. Those are just fancy words. It's just two different groups. We operate in the city and outside the city. We cover about 15 counties in this area. This website right here, One Pill Can Kill, it's a DEA website, has a lot of really good information on it about fentanyl. They update it constantly. They also have an X that they update as well. And so if you go to that, a lot of the stuff I put up here will be on there, but everything you're going to see today is here in Lubbock. I'm not going to give you statistics or numbers from around the world. Everything you're going to see is what we do here in Lubbock. We'll start with this young man. This young man come from a good family. What's unique about his situation is fentanyl had affected his whole family. So his brother was also addicted to fentanyl, overdosed and died. We just saw a video, probably should get away from the word overdose. It's actually poisoning. It's fentanyl poisoning. Someone did it on purpose. And so when they take that, even one pill can kill you, so I wouldn't say that's an overdose. This young man right here, he got tied up in our investigation, grew up in a good family. Family owns a business. Family was involved in his life. He got caught in our investigation. His brother overdosed and died. He continued to sell methamphetamine and fentanyl. But what's important, we're going to play this call from him. He's telling one of his girlfriends, he says, "Watch how many people die from these pills. It's an epidemic and it's going to continue." And this young man was affected, his whole family was affected by this drug. So I played this, this is the same presentation we give to kids, and so it's important for them to hear this.
Because before, if you would have asked me, I would have been like, "I'm never stopping, I'm never going to stop taking them." Damn, but doesn't, does he live, does he live in Lubbock or does he live out of town?
Yeah, I just pulled it up on Facebook and the first post literally is just say...
Damn, and he overdosed from them?
Does it say anything? I thought it was suicide.
Oh, he, damn, he killed himself?
I don't know, not suicide. I think it's overdose.
Yeah, he probably just popped a few of them perks and just, that's all it takes. Just a few.
You can use that, it's like, just a scare.
Damn, that's crazy. I just, well, it's just, it's an epidemic right now. I mean, like, watch within the next year, how many people drop from them, them 30s?
Do you know how many people have already?
Yeah, exactly. So many people have already, and it's just going to continue. Like Chapo Guzman even said...
The units in Lubbock do an operation with fentanyl. We take those drugs, whether it's an undercover informant by, or if we're just making arrests, we send those drugs to the DEA lab in Dallas. When I get those back, I get a breakdown of everything that was in that pill. Every drug you see up there on the screen, that was here in Lubbock, Texas. Some of the ones that really stick out is carfentil. Carfentil is used to tranquilize elephants. That's pills here in Lubbock, floral fentanyl. Y'all can research some of these. Most of these are on the website, but every one of these up here are what we found in Lubbock. One that we're starting to see, which is really kind of scary, is called xylazine. The reason xylazine is scary, the only drug that can reverse the effects of an opioid overdose is Narcan. Xylazine is not an opioid. It's a drug used by veterinarians on large animals. If that pill, which we are starting to see, has xylazine in it, Narcan will not work to revive that person. Also, what we're starting to see, when we worked heroin, if someone was overdosing on heroin and they were almost dead, we would hit them with Narcan and they would wake up instantly. And a lot of times, they'd be pissed because we were on their high. With Nar, with a, with a fentanyl, what we're seeing is four or five doses just keep them alive until we can get them to the hospital. So one dose isn't working anymore. If xylazine is in it, then it won't work at all. Also, what we're seeing is when they're starting to inject this, we don't see a lot of injecting with the fentanyl here. It's mostly smoking. But when we do see it, this is what it does to the skin, the xylazine. You can get on YouTube and put in Zombie Land, or you can put in Kingston, PA, and it'll bring up a whole video of this stuff, what's going on up there right now, which is kind of scary. But this is what it's doing to the skin. So we use, in our other presentation, this presentation is about an hour and a half long. I think Ms. Patterson has seen it, has changed since you've seen it. We're starting to see new stuff, but we really put this graphic up. One thing we're missing on this drug that we haven't done with other drugs is education. If we do not get this information in front of kids and they see how dangerous these pills are, we're going to miss the boat on that, and we're already seeing that. This graphic right here, it's not, I mean, it's pretty close to my paycheck, but you can see how far from that decimal is, and you can see the dosage range of fentanyl. That's all you need to ingest to take your life. When we first started working this drug, probably 2017, 2018, we saw it only in the powder form, and we were behind this law enforcement. We really didn't know what we were seeing. But these were the labs we were seeing. Most people see these pills and they think that the lab is, people in white coats, everything's clean and not messy. One of these labs was about six blocks from Cooper High School on 1585. During that case, I think we had eight to nine overdoses in that case that resulted in death. This is what we're seeing now. I don't get into politics, that's not my business, that's what you guys do. But what we are seeing is the precursors are coming from China, we know that, and they're coming to Mexico. The reason the cartels like this is because they don't have to wait on the plants to grow, which take about 18 months, especially for heroin or coke, only comes from two places in the world, they don't have to wait on that. They can order the precursors, they can put them in the super labs like this, have these pills mixed and pressed, and ship it straight, obviously, to us. What we are seeing, and we've actually interviewed guys that have run these labs, is they'll bring in a chemist, they'll either pay them or they're kidnapping them, and the chemist will teach two people with no experience how to cook these pills. If you're in a lab, your life expectancy is about six to eight months. So it's like a secret in high school. If I teach you two how to cook fentanyl, by the time it gets down to you two, it's going to be different. So that's why we're seeing the big range in the pills. Also, they're trying to get about one grain of salt into each one of those pills, and you can see those big bins they're cooking in. You also don't see any bleach or cleaning supplies, so they just keep cooking in the same bins. We're starting to see fentanyl and coke, methamphetamine, even starting to see it in marijuana now. And the reason is, is because they're not cleaning these out, so there's a lot of cross-contamination with these drugs. When we started teaching this class about a year ago, the DEA lab said, hey, about every, out of every 10 pills y'all send us, about four out of every 10 pills that we get have a lethal dose of fentanyl in it. A few months later, they said, now it's six out of every 10, and most recently, they updated to seven out of every 10 pill that y'all send us has a lethal amount of fentanyl in it. I think before long, it'll be 10 out of 10. I'll touch real quick on kind of what we're seeing on the street. So when I first started working narcotics, if I was going to buy drugs and I wanted to get to somebody that was supplying me, I had to know somebody that knew somebody that could take me to somebody. What we're seeing now is kids are getting on social media and they're posting these emojis. And they'll, matter of fact, we have several cases going right now that have started off social media, and someone will post a menu on Telegram, and they'll say, "This is what I got. P for perks," which you can't even get perks anymore, they don't make them. So the pills that kids that are calling Percocet, they're not Percocet. 100% of every Percocet we have gotten has been counterfeit. So they'll post this, they'll post the bars for Xanax or school bus, or they'll post a gas can for weed, and they'll say, "Hit me up, I'm in traffic." And that just means they're mobile, they can bring it to you. And so someone they don't know says, "I'll take 10 pills," or "I'll take an ounce of weed," which is 200 bucks. Most of the shootings that we're seeing right now is over small amounts of drugs, and a lot of it is weed. So they'll post this, they'll meet up with someone they don't know, they just know them by their social media handle, and so they'll just rob them. Either they'll take the weed, or they'll pretend they're going to sell the drugs, they'll show up and they'll just take the money. That's how, that's how, that's what we're seeing with these shootings. I think the next one's a video. This right here, this shooting right here, this is exactly how this happened. And in my own personal opinion, I don't know if weed's any different than alcohol when you look at it. But what is different is the federal government does not legalize this drug. In Colorado and other places where they have legalized, you get a teenager or a young person, 18 to 21, or 18 to even 30, they're not going to walk into a dispensary and pay $200 for a gram of weed. They're just not going to do it. They're going to get on social media, they're going to find some on the black market, and they're going to pay $20 for that gram of weed. It's going to be the same. So when you legalize it and put it in stores, that's great, but no one's paying that price if you don't have that kind of money. And that's what, that's what they're seeing, and that's what we would see if that was to happen. And these dispensaries get them from people with private grows. So when they have these, I'm not sure what the, how to go about it, but certain people can get so many plants per person, so I could probably get a permit to grow like 100 plants. The problem is, the federal government has not legalized this. You cannot put that cash into the bank. And so robberies are up like 600% in Colorado and in New Mexico as well. But this is what happens. He robbed this kid right here for $200. This is at 38th and P. Good.
Go up, go up further. [bleep] on his arm. It needs to be tied off right here.
You gotta tie it up, man.
I'm going to look, he's got a...
You gotta tie it up. It's going to hurt, man. It's going to hurt, but it's going to save your life, right?
Just keep talking, okay?
Keep talking to us.
Do you know those people?
Yes.
I know, I know.
They're coming, they're coming.
What's their name? Jigga, I just know him as Jigga.
Heard him ask, "Do you know him?" And he said, "Yeah, I just know him as Jigga." Well, that was just his social media. TAG does a lot with these younger people, and so they knew instantly who that was. We had that guy in custody in about an hour. But he met up to rob him, that was over $200. That was it. Most young kids now, they buy these pills and they get the pills, and you can get on your phone and you can put in small blue pill, M30 on the pill, and it'll tell you that that is an oxycodone pill. And so the kids think it's safe. No, I just Googled it, it's oxycodone. 100% of the M30s we're getting right now, when we get them back, are fentanyl. So on this picture, on your right or on your left would be what the pill would be if you were to Google it, but when we got it back from the lab, that's actually what the pill As you can see, they're getting really good. You can see the difference between the counterfeit and the real pills. If you were to have those in your hand, there's no way you could tell the difference. This is the education that we're not getting to our kids. They think these pills are made in a lab and they're safe and they're exactly what they're reported to be. We're really seeing an upswing in Xanax and Adderall. When I was in school, kids would share Adderall if they went out and partied all night and had to study the next day. You would ask your friend for an Adderall so you could stay awake and study. Xanax has been around forever. People talk about it. Most of these kids' parents have a prescription for that, and so they think it's safe. And so they buy a Xanax or an Adderall, but they're actually getting a counterfeit pill that has who knows what in it. This is one that was pressed here in Lubbock. I don't have time for the story, but the kid thought he was making a MDMA, and it's about the time we were seeing fentanyl, and I asked him what the white stuff in the pills were. I thought it was fentanyl. He took me into probably one of the, the garage was so nasty, you could, you could taste what it smelled like. I don't know if you've ever been in a place like that, but he was pretty sure that was McDonald french fries and rat poop in the pills that he mixed. So you never know what you're putting in your mouth. As you can see, these pills right here, we're starting to buy a lot of these pills. You can see the different colors of the pills. These pills are not made for people in my age. At 45, if I want to get drunk or I want to get high, I don't care what the drug looks like. I know what I'm buying and I just want to get drunk or high. This is made for children. Those pills do not look dangerous. Same thing with this, in '22, we started seeing a bunch of these come across the border in Arizona. We call them rainbow pills, and we are buying these consistently here in Lubbock. Same thing. You can see how they're packaging them. A lot of kids come to Tech from small communities, maybe they don't get to a city. Some kids graduate, they're graduating classes, 50 kids. So they get, they get the alcohol class, we've taught them what a crack pipe looks like, what a meth pipe looks like. They know not to put a needle in their arm, but they get to Texas Tech or another college and they see Woody handing out rainbow pills or Xanax that haven't been dangerous or Adderall. It kind of lowers those guards, and a lot of kids we talked to that have got involved in this, that was kind of their story. Pills were never dangerous. We were never taught that pills were dangerous, and now we got Toy Story handing them out, and they look, they don't look like they taste bad, and so they try them, and that's all it takes. When we, we first started seeing the pills pretty heavy, we have a thing that comes across DEA and it kind of tells us what's going on around the country. They got this seizure right here, and it was 15,000 pills. And DEA was like, something's got to happen. This is a ton of pills, you know how many people this can kill. This is the average seizure we see now. 4.5 million pills. This is one seizure on one day out of one vehicle. This isn't like a month-long seizure, and we're seeing this consistently. We've had to change our tactics as well. This case right here, if you're a patrol officer or you're an interdiction officer, drug dogs have never been trained on fentanyl for obvious reasons. If they smell that, it can die, and the sheriff and the chief, if I kill a $20,000 dog, I better have a reason that that happened. And so we try not to do that. But if you pull somebody over, that one box, one box of nerds can hold 1,000 pills, pretty easy. These pills are very small. And so if it's glued back or sealed properly, you're not going to tear into people's stuff. And so we're starting to see more and more smuggling like this. Same thing with the Skittles. The bags were sealed properly, everything was sealed like it came from the factory. But they're also taking these into the schools. And so if you're a teacher and someone's holding a box of nerds and it doesn't look like it's been tampered with, they're probably not going to go into it. We really try to educate the teachers too. If you see someone handing out one Skittle at a time and that Skittle costs 20 bucks, probably ought to pay attention to that. This young man right here, I don't have a lot of time to get into his story, but he made his way to Lubbock from Russia. He was a criminal in Russia, walked across the border, ended up in Lubbock. When I talked to him and I asked him why Lubbock, he said, "Well, y'all got Texas Tech University? You have South Plains, you have LCU, Wayland Baptist University." He said, "Y'all have a lot of colleges," and I can post up, which where he did, it was over by the Heart Hospital in that apartment complex, and he said, "There's tons of college kids right there in walking distance." And so that was, that was his reason for being here. This is what was found in his pocket. He said he was not a drug user when he started selling this. He said, but he seen how, how people were coming to get these, so he wanted to try them. So he did try them, and the first, after the first pill he took, he said that was it, he was addicted. Those Xanax look exactly like Xanax. It was marked correctly. When I got them back from the lab, it had heroin, methamphetamine and lidocaine in the pill. No Xanax. Just a close-up of that. Taylor Watson, same thing. Taylor was actually a pretty good young man, had a sports injury, got him addicted to heroin. And from heroin, he moved to fentanyl. He was able to get a plug, we call him a plug, from the cartel from Mexico. He made a trip off a phone call, picked up four keys of what he thought was heroin. He just happened to do that in front of one of my informants. Formant called me, said, "We're coming back with four keys of heroin." That's a ton of heroin. So I honestly didn't believe that they were just picking it up and coming back with it. But they did, they ended up at 19th and Quaker. We got surveillance on them, passing through Tech. They were starting to use this drug, and he nodded off at the wheel and hit another vehicle. So luckily, we had TAG and HIDA guys there, were able to block them in and prevent that pursuit. But when I got this back from the lab, it was half heroin and half fentanyl. If this drug would have got released into the heroin world here, we would have had mass overdoses with that drug. When he got back, they trotted out on this young man right here because it had a weird texture. Heroin is really soft, like putty, and it has a really strong vinegar smell. This was really hard, like glass, and had a very slight vinegar smell, so they were kind of leery of what it was. So they trotted out on this guy right here. We just bought this a few months ago right here. As you can see, those are, they almost look like Flintstone vitamins. We got one batch we got back, they were 100% methamphetamine. The other half we got back was fentanyl and meth combined. This up here, I put these pictures for the kids, the two football players before played for Texas, they have a real powerful story, you can Google that. Tyler Skaggs was a pitcher for the Angels. We know what kind of sacrifice you got to have to get to that level. His drug dealer was the guy with the glasses. He actually worked for the Angels. He pitched against the Texas Rangers in Dallas. This guy sold him what he thought was an oxycodone. It wasn't. It was a fentanyl pill, took it and it killed him in a hotel room in Dallas. We're doing an operation at 19th and Frankfurt, and this girl was not part of the operation. We were buying from somebody totally different, and she pulled up next to me and I filmed this video, and they were actually smoking fentanyl in this vehicle. She does not look like the pictures we've showed our kids in the DARE program forever. She looks just like somebody's kid.
She is crazy.
She's nodding off, and that vehicle is...
Woke up.
So we had to call somebody over and get her pulled over. This right here, same thing. You can see how clean this apartment is. We think this may be one of the apartments that they share at Tech, where they have multiple rooms and the common areas for everybody. Most people we get called and we find them overdosed, this is the position we find them in. But you can see in all of these videos, not one of them people called EMS or the cops. This right here, we think this is filmed at Overton, which is the nicest, one of the nicest hotels in Lubbock, and he is stealing this money from her. Why he filmed this, I don't know.
Hey, let me take this way and then we'll get that room, okay? For another night, okay? We're not going to be out of your time. We're going to have a rush, okay?
She seemed like she agreed with him? She's out of it, right? I wish I could ask my wife a question and she'd agree with me like that, but that's not usually what I get. But what we also find, and a lot of people don't think about, in those hotel rooms, in that position, what else can happen to those young ladies? Exactly. And it does happen. Nobody calls EMS. If that room is rolling and they're making money, they're not going to clean that room up and leave. They're going to put it in a suitcase, wheel her down to the car, and then they go dump her on the road somewhere. That happens here in Lubbock. If it is making, if it isn't making money and they're just using, they're going to clean up all their drugs and they're just going to leave. Put a do not disturb sign on the door, three or four days later, they come in to find her and then they call us. That is happening here pretty consistent. This picture right here, this is what it looks like when someone's smoking pills. So you can see the small pills in the middle foil. They'll cut a small piece of foil, put the pills on the foil, they heat the pills up. As the pill smokes, they'll take a straw or they break apart a pin, and they'll suck the vapes off of that, and that's how they get high. But then they leave this stuff laying around too. Keep going. So you can see the pins on the bottom, that's what they use. This user actually had Narcan with him, which is pretty scary. You're going to carry a drug around to save your own life because you know it could kill you once you use it, and you can see the pills. I'm sorry we're going through this so quick. This right here, one of our deputies actually saved this girl's life. She was a valedictorian in her school. She was a cheerleader, played sports, all in this community right here. Her mom was a schoolteacher, did everything right. You look at this house, this looks like the house that most of us live in or grew up in. It's clean, it's not some abandoned trap house. You can see her room, looks like a teenager's room. Right here. Deputy does a great job.
Just straight in the nose.
You'll see in the corner of the bed, you'll see the foil, and you'll see the straw that she was using to smoke the pill with. So she lives in this incident, 10, about 10 months later, she got rehab and eventually overdosed and died out of rehab. One thing we're starting to see with fentanyl too is it builds up a tolerance quick, but you lose that tolerance quick. So most of our deaths that we see are when someone gets right out of jail. So they get out of jail, that first 24 hours is pretty detrimental to them if they use. This is a little bit old. You can see for fentanyl in '22, we had about 100,000 deaths. I don't think this is even close for a lot of reasons. If someone's overdosing and they take them to the hospital, we may never get called. So we don't hear about this. Or they live for a few days and then they die, or the family is embarrassed and they don't want to share that, they don't have to share the medical stuff with us. Most people I ask, "What do you know about fentanyl?" And people know very little. But in comparison, if I ask somebody what they know about COVID, can tell me a lot of things about that. There's warning signs everywhere, commercials, we educate our kids on COVID, but we're not educating them on fentanyl. I think this number in '22 is probably closer to 200,000. We only have a few minutes. So these guys on the top, these were a case we worked here in Lubbock. They were each bringing in anywhere from 30,000 to 60,000 pills a month, and on the bottom are the people they used to deal for them. Cheerleader here at a local school, the other two very involved in their school. Obviously, they, they were older at this time, they were about 20, 20 to 21. When I interviewed them on the top and I said, "Why are you using these girls down here to sell for you? Because if I catch them, you know they're going to tell on you." And they said, "Yeah, we know that." But I cannot walk into a Texas Tech party and sell pills, but she can. I can't walk into Cooper High School or Lubbock High School party and sell pills, but they can. So they understand that. These are, these are the people dealing these pills. Go ahead. As you can see up here, every single one of them are caught in our cases. You can see the difference. I know y'all have heard of Faces of Meth before, but this is just a few months of using. This isn't like years of use, and you can see how it really takes a toll on the body. But this is the only drug where you cannot look at a person and tell if they're dealing fentanyl or not. You can tell if they're a heavy user. This drug does not care what color you are, how much money you have, how much money you don't have, what side of town you live on. I could probably put any one of y'all in my car right now, I could drive you to an area of town and say, "This is probably the drug we're gonna buy here, and because I'm a white male, or she's a Hispanic female, this is the price you're gonna get." This drug does not care. It is affecting every community in Lubbock the same, every side of town the same. Go ahead. Go ahead. These are Adderall we just got, they're stamped properly, the color's right. Uh, they're actually probably some of the best pills we got. One batch was a hundred percent methamphetamine, the next batch was fentanyl, and they were marked and looked identical, came from the same source. Skip it. Let me skip it. So this, uh, this right here is the sentences we got on them. All dealers, uh, if you were to know their backgrounds, it would not be, most of them would not be the background that you thought of. A lot of them came from, uh, households with two parents, both of them had, their parents had careers and were involved in their life. But they were never educated on fentanyl, or even small amounts of weed, if you get into that world, what can happen to you. Uh, if anybody wants this presentation, we've done it at, uh, most, all of Cooper. Uh, we have not been in any LISD schools yet, we have taught their administration, we have not been in front of anybody at a friendship yet, we have taught their administration. Uh, but we've done a lot of the smaller schools. Uh, but this presentation's about an hour and a half long, and we really get into the stories and show a lot more stuff. And so if any of y'all would like this, we've gone to churches, we'll pretty much go to anywhere, someone will listen to us. One thing we're missing on our side is education, and we have to get this in front of the kids. Cuz of them, this stuff is just not dangerous. Even the way we market weed right now, marijuana, that in and of itself, we don't, we don't show them what comes with that. It isn't just about the weed. The most violence we're seeing right now in this city is behind small amounts of pills and small amounts of weed. And that's just the facts. Uh, thank y'all for having us. Uh, that's our contact information, if, if we can get this in front of anybody, we will, we will absolutely do that. There's a lot more to this, but, uh, time's a little limited here.
Tony, thank y'all very much for coming. Uh, council, do you have any questions of Tony or Melissa or anyone? Um, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Tony, thank you for being here, and that's, that was a great presentation. And just a question for you, what age group of students do you think is appropriate to present to? At what age do you start?
The youngest overdose that I'm aware of in Lubbock is a twelve-year-old at Cabasos Junior High. So what we've been doing is sixth grade, six through twelve, is what we try to get in front of. But if I had a three-year-old and they could understand me, I would start talking to them then.
I agree, thank you.
Ms. Patterson Harris?
How are you this morning?
Good ma'am, how are you?
All as well. I was, uh, wanna know if you could provide a copy of the list of the, uh, different, uh, forms of fentanyl that you provided, if, if possible?
Yes ma'am.
And, um, one question, and this is more pertaining to meth and it may even be for fentanyl. What is the smell when someone maybe next door or around you is cooking or preparing those drugs? What is, what, what type of smell is it?
There's not a lot, we haven't found a lot of smells with just the drug itself. It's so available, we're not seeing a lot of people cooking it here anymore, because it costs too much. Because I can make a short drive, we just worked a case where three guys who were absolutely users could gather up about five thousand dollars. They would drive to El Paso, I know cuz we followed them, and it's about a five-hour drive. They would buy, they could buy as many pills as they could for about eighty cents a pill, eighty cents to a dollar a pill.
Oh, really?
Once they get back to Lubbock, those pills are seven to twenty dollars. So you can see the profit in a five-hour trip, you can see the profit they make. When we interviewed those guys and asked them, "How did y'all hook up with somebody there to get that kind of, that amount?" They said, "We just went to Walmart, and we sat in the parking lot, and we could find another user, and then they took us to somebody." So it was that easy. Used to, you couldn't get a supply like that without meeting somebody somewhere that knew somebody. And so that's why social media is, it's really such a big thing right now. And, uh, a lot of times, these groups will test you with weed. They'll say, "We'll just sell you a little bit of weed to see if you're a cop or not." And so that's how we get into a lot of these things. But we're not really seeing people produce this like in eight, seventeen and eighteen where they were making the pills themselves. It just isn't cost-effective to do that.
That's, I mean, that's good to know as well. Uh, one last thing, and then I'll let you go. And thank you for being here.
Yes ma'am.
I always enjoy your presentation, and because the information, you're giving us the information as it changes.
Yeah, and it's, it's changed since you've seen it, but I tr- I think y'all should see what's here. I don't think it really matters too much what's going on around the world, it, cuz it's different here. I'm talking to ge- we talk to guys, and, and they don't see a lot of smoking like we do, that's pretty much all we see. Uh, they see other forms of that, so it's, it's, it's unique for Lubbock.
Yeah. Uh, just one quick question, I know for a while, years ago, they were pumping kids with Adderall like crazy.
Yes.
Is that still a norm which would allow folks to have access to Adderall in a, in a-
Yes.
Higher, uh, amount?
Well, uh, yeah, I don't think that slowed down any, I think peop- kids still have Adderall. And, and what is bad for us, if you do have a prescription for Adderall, and I pull you over, and you have counterfeit Adderall, I can't tell.
Yeah.
And I can't take your prescription. I can't say, "Let me send this to the lab and I'll get your medicine back if it's legit." We can't do that, so we have to, you know, someone's gotta tell us about it, or we gotta buy a pill from them before we can, we can get into that. So that's one thing we're starting to see at the colleges, is it's been around since I was in college, Adderall. You know, kids a little crazy, give them a little bit of Adderall, they'll calm down. Same thing is still going on. The cartels study us the same way we study them. And so they understand that about us. They know Xanax isn't dangerous here for up. They know Adderall has been around forever, kids take it. You can see by the color of the pills, they're changing the color for our children, because they just grew their clientele. You know, with heroin or, or crack or methamphetamine, it shrinks a little bit by age. You don't really get into the younger group, but this, twelve-years-old to, to ninety-nine, they can get it in front of them. So, uh, and, and their mindset doesn't change. So violence and death is, doesn't shock them. So a lot of people say, "Why are we taking this if it's killing us so fast?" They don't care. They don't care how many people they kill.
Yeah.
It's about money, that's it.
Do you think we should start even a little younger than twelve?
Uh-
Because, I mean, cuz what, yeah, and I know you've seen there's so many ten-year-olds, because at that time, they can, uh, go into the system. And man, the young, the younger folks are doing some, if you allow me to say, some jacked-up stuff. And, uh, I'm just thinking if twelve is too old, they seen a whole lot by then, and maybe back up at even go a little younger.
I can tell you, if a kid has an iPhone, there's nothing I'm gonna tell them that's gonna shock them. So whatever ea- age they have that, if they're allowed to watch cable TV or satellite TV or Hulu, I'm not gonna shock them. But if I can show them really how dangerous these pills are, even though they don't look dangerous.
Yeah.
Or if your mom or your doctor doesn't give it to you, don't take it, cuz you really don't know what it is. It's a matter of time before we start seeing it look like Tylenol. I'm surprised we haven't seen that yet, but, but it's coming. Uh, we just, we just, uh, made an arrest on a guy, uh, it's been several months ago. He had a bunch of weed, and it was completely covered, you know, the, the, the Christmas trees you get that have the white stuff on it, that's what it looked like? And I was like, "What is this stuff?" We sent it off, and it was all cocaine and the weed, which I had never seen that, so-
And we're looking at a different, uh, uh, form of, of the marijuana, the weed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris, Mr. McBrayer?
So, uh, what, since this is a Texas anti-gang update, what percentage of the supply of fentanyl in, say, Lubbock, do you think comes through gangs versus, uh, some other means of supply?
Uh, so narcotics and gangs go hand in hand, always have, they always will. It's just a quick way for them to make money. But with these younger gangs, we call them hybrid gangs, the social media is a big thing. Guys like us, if we're dealing dope, I don't, I don't have social media at all. My kids always telling me stuff, and I gotta get them to show me how to use my phone. But this younger generations, that's how they communicate. When we were growing up, you just looked for all the bicycles and that's where everybody was at. Well nowadays, they just talk on the phone. So the younger groups, the hybrid gangs, we're really starting to see them push that because they're really active on social media. It's about showing the money, showing the guns, and to get that, they gotta, they gotta have, they, they're not out getting nine-to-fives. So selling drugs is, is a big, a big part of that. Um, almost every gang investigation or narcotic investigation runs into some sort of gang activity.
And, and you know, I think, when I think of the word gang, I think of a traditional, I guess, idea of a gang, when you're calling something a hybrid gang.
Right.
Explain what you mean by a hybrid gang, is this more different than a, what we would consider a traditional gang-related activity?
Yes, uh, a lot of these hybrid gangs, a lot of them have like three initials or three words they call themselves, uh, Never Tell a Word or, or Head Honcho Gang. Most of it's done at the lunch table, at school. Uh, the traditional gangs, maybe their dad was a Crip gang member or a Blood gang member, but the two brothers grow up in different households with their brothers. We have, uh, pictures and documented where three or four of them claim like a Blood or a Crip, but they come together to make money, and now they call themselves some other, Head Honcho Gang or Never Tell a Word. Uh, I don't know what the stats are, uh, we could probably get some people here with a tag that can tell you. But I would say a majority of our shootings that you're seeing on the news, that's what it's about. And it doesn't matter if you're Blood or Crip, but if you match with those three initials, then you're with them. So you may, your family may be all Blood, Crip, Latin King or something like that, but because four of your buddies grew up together in the same neighborhood, you're gonna come together and run together. So that's the difference, and they, they don't always, you know, carry a flag or, or have a certain color. A lot of them are hand signs, or they have a tattoo or something like that, so they're harder to pick out for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer, Ms. Joy?
I heard you say that you're taking this presentation to the schools to get it in front of the kids. What efforts are you making to get it in front of the parents? Who are the responsible adults?
Right. So, uh, most of, we talked to administration, uh, especially the smaller schools, the parents will come at the same time. Um, we've even gone like on Monday night, we'll invite the parents, they'll see the presentation, and we'll say, "Hey, this is what your kids are gonna see tomorrow," uh, at the presentation. So we always either invite the parents or try to do it the night before or the day before, so they can see it. Um, it, just like y'all, I, I can't imagine doing y'all's job or being a teacher now, of all the things they gotta worry about who they offend or, or someone's gonna get upset. I have that disclaimer cuz I don't worry about that. We have to be honest with the parents and the children. We cannot, I, I'm not gonna take my presentation in there and dole it down or try to sugarcoat it, because the kids are seeing that. And it's in every school. We, we did this presentation at, at Trinity. And by the time I got to my truck, a kid walked out, handed me a tag to a car, and said, "This is who's selling to the kids here at Trinity." And they were right, we actually already had an investigation on that guy. So a lot of parents wanna say, "Well, it can't be my kid." Most of those kids up there were involved in their school, one was a valedictorian, smartest kid in the entire school. We've talked to some, full ride to tech. Uh, so it, it, this, this drug doesn't care where you come from, but if we do not educate kids on this, it's, it's gonna be too late. We're gonna miss the boat on that, we're never gonna get in front of this, and the parents need to see it. We've gone to churches, uh, we've gone to, the five or six parents get together, I'll show up at their house and, and, and talk about this. So we do everything we can to get it in front of the parents.
Do you have a list of, uh, things that a parent should be watching for? And, and, and I'm a firm believer, this starts at home.
Yes.
Uh, when they're very young.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but because we're busy, have things going on, sometimes we don't pay attention to our-
Right.
-children the way we should, do you have a list of things that a parent should be watching for with, with someone? First of all, this, this is all tied into a lot of other social issues that we have, mental health, for what.
Right.
Uh, but I, I think as a parent, and, and thank goodness my kids grown. But as a parent, you have to have some help.
Right.
Some of us are pretty naive.
Sure.
Um-
Well, if you're like me and you don't get on social media, you wouldn't see that. There's like ten different types of social media, some I just heard about last week, I've never even heard about. So yes, we do have that stuff in our presentation. It's, you know, the whole presentation's about an hour and a half long, and we put websites for parents to go to. Uh, I think we're at what, ten thousand kids? We just hit ten thousand kids, so that's how many kids we've taught. And, uh, the smaller schools, we've hit, we really had a big turnout with parents. And some of the stuff they're like, "We never thought about that." Like small things, like, "Why do you have five burnt straws in your backpack? Or why do you have ten pins that are taken apart? Or why do you have all this fool balled up in the bottom of your backpack?" Uh, and a lot of it is getting around, getting kids that sees it in their friends and that will come and be honest with the parents, or, or talk to law enforcement, or tell somebody that my, "Hey, I think my friend's involved in this." This is what I'm starting to see, I had no idea what that was until I seen these pictures. So we have to get it in front of people at some point. DEA does a great job, LPD does a great job, the sheriff is really pushing this education thing. Um, we need to get into LISD, we need to get into friendship. Um, we have taught that administration, I can't imagine the logistics of that for them. I know that's gotta be a nightmare to get all those kids in one place at one time, or, or whatever, but Cooper did it. Now, we've taught every single kid, uh, middle school through, through high school. Uh, and I think maybe next year, we'll, we'll be able to get into those schools. Um, but, and it doesn't have to be me, but it needs to be somebody. Somebody's gotta do it.
Does a, a fentanyl user, does the fentanyl store in the body kind of like methamphetamine does? Even, even if you stop taking it, sometimes it has stored somewhere in your body and comes back to talk to you about wanting more? Does fentanyl do the same thing?
So, uh, that is some new stuff we're learning, because probation is, they do drug tests now, and we'll know someone's using, and like, "Hey, we just tested them and, and they're clean," and that was like seven days. So I think a lot of it is, some of these people are, are trying to get the M30 pills or the fentanyl pills, but they may get it and it may be, it may have lidocaine or some kind of weird drug in it that simulates fentanyl, and so they don't actually have fentanyl in their system. But that is something that I'm behind on, and, and I think medical is, how long it stays in the system, depending on if you smoke it or you inject it, or the most dangerous way to take it is to just eat the pill. So I think all of that depends on how long it stays in the system, and, and this pill thing is kinda, it's, it's not new, but it is new as far as research for us.
You, you told us that most of the usage that you deal with is smoked, is that right?
Yes ma'am.
Where they take the pills, put them on the foil and heat them?
Yes.
Is there any ingesting of just the pill itself?
So, from, from what I understand is when they burn it, it burns down to nothing by the time they get unsmoking it. But most of the users that I talk to, and I say, "Hey, do y'all just take it?", and they look at me and say, "Are you crazy? That's the most dangerous thing you can do is eat that pill." But they'll smoke it, the problem is, is you're trying not to hit that pill that has five grains of salt in it, and you want the one that has one grain of salt so you don't die. I'm not a doctor, but I know they use fentanyl in the medical field, but it's by the microgram. So we have two people, they don't know anything about medical, mixing fentanyl in a horse trough and trying to get it right. And then they don't clean it, and we remix it from chemicals that they're not a hundred percent sure what it is, until they start mixing or, you know, someone dies from it, so. Uh, you know, we're not getting these from Pfizer Drug Company. Uh, and that's what, I, I think the kids don't understand that. They don't understand where it comes from. Nobody's testing these things out. You know, the, the administration's not making sure every pill that comes out of Boris Cartel is not got a hundred percent fentanyl in it, you know, so. Um, there's still some things we're learning on it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, a couple more things, Tony. And first, can we put the slide back up with your contact information? I'd love to get that so I can work with you. I'd love to get you into the friendship schools, LISD schools. I have a thirteen-year-old that is at Friendship Middle School, and they all need to see this. You know, as, as a pediatric doctor, so I do deal in the medicine world, and for everybody in Lubbock, I see medication and drug overdoses weekly, sometimes multiple times a week. And the one thing that, um, Ms. Joy said that I tend to actually disagree with now is that this now starts with social and family, and that is not what we are seeing in these kids. We are seeing, like you said, valedictorian, straight A students, cheerleaders, football players, who think they're getting something they actually think they're getting, like you said, Adderall or Xanax or things that they've seen that they know it's, eh, it's not that big a deal anymore. Or even just, "I'm gonna smoke weed one time at a party," and they're laced with all of this stuff, and they're coming into my hospital, intubated on a ventilator-
Right.
And, or dead.
Yeah, and we're starting to see a lot, um, of things get put into the vapes. We haven't seen fentanyl in the vapes yet, but we did just seize a large amount of liquid fentanyl. So it's a, it's a matter of time before, before we do see that. And the, the city does a great job, there's a fentanyl class that gets, or a vape class that gets taught, and they do a great job of that. I took it, and, uh, um, my oldest is twenty. I said, "Let me catch you with the vape, we'll see what happens to you." So, and she's twenty, she can do what she wants, but, uh, I didn't know everything that comes with that. So it's, it's a matter of time before we start to see that in the vapes, and y'all know, that's a, man, that's all in the high schools now.
Well, and it's not even in the high schools, I've heard it as young as third and fourth grade, that Pete, these kids are seeing it at school in backpacks and on buses, so it, it's just a matter of time before this filters into even our younger kids.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson, Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Um, thank you for the presentation, definitely an eye-opener. But what I wanted to know, what have been some of the biggest hurdles for you in making that connection? You, you know, you talked about not being able to get into the schools, why?
I don't know. The administration has seen it. Um, but like I said, I, I don't know what, I can't imagine being a teacher or an administrator in a school right now with the things they gotta be careful with. So I think they want it there. Uh, the, the lady that does the, the security stuff for LISD has been great with us, and we were up there all summer. We've taught every single teacher, and she wants it in the school. But like I said, I think some of it's logistics. Um, some schools wanna send out a waiver. Um, I don't like to, to judge someone, I don't do that job, so I don't wanna, to say something that I don't, I don't know about. They know the information, we're here, and they don't have- They know the information, we're here and they don't have to use it. They can use any, just somebody. But it needs to be, to be honest when they go in front of the kids. So, um, and, and maybe this next year coming up, because we did all this at the end of the school, uh, last year, so maybe they're trying to work that out. Uh, I know she talked about trying to get kids in auditorium at certain campuses and all the different schedules. And we may not hit every kid, but we need to start somewhere. Oh, with that, Cooper, Cooper has done, they have a ton of kids and, uh, they've done a fabulous job with that.
Well, I appreciate your time and I hope that it's something that we can also help to foster in our community as far as awareness.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Ms. Patterson Harris?
I'm listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you recommend, uh, that citizens, uh, obtain possession of some of the Narcan pumps uh, to have on hand, maybe carry them in their car? I know during CPR classes, they used to, uh, ask you if you concerned to carry the little map, the things to go in your mouth and have them in your car. And of course, we did. Would you recommend, do you think it's a good idea for individuals to have it?
Yes. Um, from what I understand and, and, uh, Dr. Wilson may can correct me if I'm wrong. When we first started seeing the powder, we would pre-dose ourselves with Narcan in case we kicked the door and the powder flew up or we knocked something over or whatever. We didn't know what we, we would see, so we would pre-dose ourselves with that. From what I understand, if, if you're wrong, you think someone's overdosing and you hit them with Narcan, there's no real effect that can hurt them.
You're just awake.
Right. Right.
That's what I'm saying, you're just awake.
Uh, and there's a, a, a law, uh, the Good Samaritan Act, that if you're acting to save someone's life, you're protected with that. Uh, I carry it everywhere I go, it's in my truck, I have it. Uh, it is harder to get now. We used to have a bunch of Narcan, we couldn't give it away. And now it's hard to get. They are gonna make it, uh, over the counter. Uh, I wouldn't suggest going to the pharmacy. We had a lady do that and was buying it for a fire department, a small fire department and used her insurance and they flagged her as a drug user and dropped her. So, we had to help her sort that out. So, I wouldn't suggest that. But, uh, there used to be a website and I don't know if it's still active, you know? It's called More, uh, More Narcan Please dot, dot com. And you could get it pretty quick. Last time we tried to get it, it took about three months, but they'll send you up to, I think, 48 doses at a time. But yeah, if you can carry it, I would suggest everybody carrying that stuff.
After, once I saw your presentation the other year, I, I ordered some and I was like, "Man, I need to, I wanna have this on hand just in case."
And it does have an expiration date, but from what we understand, using it's better than not using it even when it's expired, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Martinez Garcia?
One more quick question. Do we have any rehab programs for folks? I know there's not a lot of rehab in this area.
So, we teach, we have taught at Texas Tech, we've done the football team, uh, and we do a lot of other, uh, things at tech. And there is a group there and I can't think of their name right now. We're gonna start bringing them with us and they have pamphlets and stuff to hand out. Uh, I know there's Dov, Dove Tree here, but I think most rehab places, if you can find them, I think they'll, they'll treat this the same. But, uh, we're gonna start bringing that. That was a good question we had at one of the schools. Well, okay, we have it now, what? I didn't have that answer. So, uh, they, they wanna kinda partner with us and start showing up and they hand out pamphlets, things to go, places to call, uh, if you suspect this or if you have a problem with it yourself, um, to, to get that done.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy?
The, um, City County Health Department deals with a lot of people
Yes.
who have used and are in rehab, but they, they've gotta have people to follow up with them. And that's one of our problems is we don't have enough people to, to follow up. And I hope, Doc, uh, Ms. Wilson didn't under, misunderstand what I said about the parents. There are parents who don't know
You're right.
any of this information. They don't know what to look for.
Right.
Nothing. But if you're in the home with your child, you need to be ever aware of what's out there.
Yeah, we have a lot of parents that said, "Man, we talked about drugs, but I never knew I had to talk about pills. I didn't think that was an issue." And so, you're right, a lot of it's education. And, and that's, and that's law enforcement. We, we have to get out there and, and, uh, sometimes showing things we've done in our cases detrimental to us. But the upside is if we save kids, then, then it's worth it for me.
Thanks for what you do.
Yeah, I want to concur. Thank you, Tony, Melissa, Melissa, thank you for, for helping him put this all together. You know, Tony and I talked about this a couple of months ago and he said, "I just got, I have, just in my heart, I've got to get this out to the community and I would love to get in front of the council and just give information." So, I know where y'all, y'all's hearts are and we are very grateful to you for the extra time that y'all put in and for Sheriff, uh, allowing y'all to do this. I know there's a disclaimer. Um, but it, it, it's just another example of the great community. We have there in Lubbock where people wanna give their time, uh, to, to educate and, and make things better in our community. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'll, we'll put your number out there, um, and hopefully you get a lot of calls and hopefully we can continue on this, this path.
If you want the presentation on time, call Melissa, because she has to keep up with me, so.
I know she does. There's a lot of people have to keep up with you, TW. Uh, and then, and again, just for this council and for future, future councils, it's another lesson for us to remember how important departments working together with the police department, the sheriff's department, DEA. I mean, everybody working together and pulling in the same direction is extremely important. And this tag unit is extremely important to our community.
We haven't always had that. And the information sharing is, it's a game changer. We, we would not have the clearance rate of these shootings or the knowledge of this drug if we did not work together. And, uh, the guys in that building, they don't care about the credit, just getting this out there. 2016. And it's, and it's grown. And it's, uh, it's gonna continue to grow. And, uh, I, I couldn't imagine having law enforcement now without that group, without everybody talking. We missed the boat on so many things. Even a lot of this information, a lot of these cases that y'all briefly saw, we would not have had that large-scale case without every agency. And so ATF and DEA, LPD, Sheriff's Office, and it's a force multiplier for all of us. So, it, it's, it's a big deal for, for the community.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate you very much. All right, council, at this time, I'm gonna read us into executive session just for purposes of, um, the record, we will, we're gonna take a brief recess after I read us in and we will convene back at 12:15, uh, for executive session. But at this time, we will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property under section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and personnel matters under section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. At this time, we will be in recess, um, for executive session, which will begin promptly at 12:15 and then we will be back here at 2:00 PM for our regular agenda. We are in recess. All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is 2:00 and City Council is back from executive session. We are calling into order for our regular session. Uh, before we do call into order, we have our ceremonial items. Uh, today, we are privileged to have Pastor Ben Legace from Redeemer Church. If you wanna come on up, pastor? He's the executive pastor of Redeemer. Always glad to have, uh, folks from Redeemer with us today. So, if you'd always please stand and remain standing for the prayer and then we will go immediately into our pledges led by Mayor Pro Tem Patterson Harris.
All right, let us pray. Father, you lead us with wisdom and uphold, uphold justice. So, we start in prayer to you as the City Council gathers to shape our community's future this year. Guide those making decisions, helping them to see clearly, to choose justly for our city's benefit. Help them to deal with the challenges from an abundance of practical wisdom and a sense of fairness, making choices that bring real benefits. In their discussions, let them be reminded of the gospel's call to love and serve our neighbors, always aware of the lasting impact of their choices. Bless our efforts to bring about meaningful change, to nurture respect, unity and cooperation among us. May their work address today's needs and set the stage for a prosperous future for everyone in our community. Encourage them as they help build a community where every person can thrive, grounded in the truth that our freedoms and opportunities are gifts to be used wisely and justly. In all they do, may they remember that true leadership is found in humble service following the example of Jesus. In your name, we commit our efforts in our city's future, trusting in your sovereign plan. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you remain standing and joining with us as we say that pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, we will now move to Agenda Item 4, which is citizen comments. And I've received notice that there were no citizens signed up to make public comment. All right, so we will now move to 5.1, which is the minutes from our December 5th regular City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Second, Mr. Massengill, all in favor of approval of 5.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0 on 5.1. All right, we now I think Ms. Joy may be, or maybe that all the mics are off. Is yours working?
Mine's working.
Uh, Ms. Joy's is not. I'm gonna go ahead while Mike's working on that. Let's go ahead and move to the consent agenda. We have one housekeeping matter, council. There were no pools, however, 6.16. I believe that was purchasing facilities for some furniture. I think we have a clerical error we may need to clean up. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Draw your attention to Item 6.16. The three line items, those totals are correct. The sum of those line items in your agenda backup is incorrect. The correct total for package number one, which is, uh, furnishing, furniture, furniture, excuse me, fixtures and equipment for public health, um, the correct total, the amount we're asking you to approve It's a $50,000 difference from what's written on your page.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I think all of the information was correct except there's just a topographical error there. Any questions of Mr. Atkins on 6.16? All right, with approval of council, I'll just go ahead and leave that in the consent agenda and I would ask a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.27. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 6.1 through 6.67, uh, 6.27? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, moving into our regular agenda, we'll start off with board appointments. Council, with permission, um, of everyone, I'm going to read each of the board names. I'll read the member info, uh, and the recommendation and we'll read those in and take a vote on total. Also, if you will look at Community Development and Services Board, we have one to reappoint and then the second position that's on your list, we're going to move that and post that for our next meeting. Okay? All right, so I'll start off with the Central Business District Tiff Board of Directors. Uh, Gabriel Vitella, Brett McDowell and Robert Taylor. We have recommendations to reappoint those three to their same positions. Community Development Services Board, Nisha Barnes. Recommendation to reappoint Ms. Barnes. Moving to the Comprehensive Plan Oversight Committee, we have recommendation to reappoint Alan Holly and John Zweiker and to point, uh, to place Cal Rabble, uh, from District 3 into the, uh, position to replace Dana Lambines. Next, we have a recommendation on the Cultural Arts Grants Review Standing Subcommittee for Christina Gonzalez to be reappointed. Next, we have the Health Educational Facilities Development Corporation Board. Recommendation to replace Dr. Rice Spearman, who has moved to LEDA Board with Dr. David Long. Next, we have the Housing Finance Corporation Board of Directors. We have a recommendation to reappoint William Danovic to that position and to replace Dwight Overton with Kendra Watson from District 4. Next, we have the Libraries Board. Uh, we have Eddie Kirkpatrick, Sherry Lewis and Kathy Kitten. Recommendations to reappoint those three parties. Moving on to the second page, we have the Lubbock Business Park Tiff Board of Directors. We have recommendation to reappoint Dr. Kathy Rollo, Tony Whitehead and to replace Brett Kate with Christopher Hook. Next, we have the Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board. We have, uh, thankfully found Marvin White from District 5, who will serve in that position to replace Mark Branscombe. Next, we have the North Overton Tiff Board of Directors. Recommendation to reappoint Tim Pridmore to that position. Next, we have the Permit and License Appeal Board. We have a recommendation to replace Thomas Hawkins with Tarek Redwin. Moving on to the Public Transit Advisory Board, we have a recommendation to replace Naomi Couture, is it Couture, sorry, with Kristen Couture. Thank you. I'm gonna, we're gonna replace Naomi with Kristen Murray from District 5. Next, we will have the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission. Recommendation to reappoint Mary Kreitz and then to appoint Sheila Powell from District 2, Matthew Weaver from District 4 and Daniel Bice from District 1. Then on the Urban Renewal Neighborhood Redevelopment Commission, we have a recommendation to reappoint Amber Sanders, Robert Baxter and Milton Lee and then to appoint Brenda Hawkins to replace Dr. Steve German, German and a recommendation to appoint Michael Gomez from District 1 to replace Joshua Frost. And then moving to our last page, the Veterans Advisory Committee, we have a recommendation to replace Aaron Johnson from District 5 with Jeff Lowry from District 4. And finally, our Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have a recommendation to replace Jeremy Hamilton with DeWanna McPherson from District 5. Replace Zane Vaughn with, or, excuse me, to promote DeWanna McPherson and to promote Shannon Spencer. And then to reappoint Joe Fee from District 2 and then to replace DeWanna McPherson in her, as her alternate spot with Daniel Craig and Shannon Sp, Spencer in the alternate spot with Jose Valenciano. All right, any questions, council, on those recommendations? Any questions on those requests? I would ask for a motion to approve those names and those recommendations to those positions. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Ms., I don't know. Does anybody really want that on the record? Ms. Joy, thank you. All right, so that falls under 7.1. All those names read in, I would, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of 7.1 and those names aforementioned, names read, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion on 7.1 and those names carries 7 to 0. All right, now we move to 7.2. This is Declaration by the Mayor for Positions on the Lubbock Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. I declare Ada Martinez and Amanda Gray as the mayor's appointments to the Lubbock Housing Authority Board Commissioners. The record? Thank you. All right, now we're moving to 7.3 and I'll turn it over to Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be with you today. Let me figure out how to... Let me figure out how to... There we go. Item 7.3 is both a public hearing and a first reading of an ordinance to set the assessment rate for the recently created Cypress Ranch Public Improvement District. So, this and the second reading on the next council agenda, should we move forward with this today, will be the final steps in creation of the Cypress Ranch PID, and set them up to start collecting that assessment this fiscal, or this calendar year. Just as a reminder, you have a map here of the PID. PID has now been created. We are now just setting the assessment rate. So, this, these are the boundaries of the Cypress Ranch PID, just to orient you and the public that might be watching, 19th Street or Level and Highways to the north. So, you're very close to the city limits on the west side of 19th Street at Inlar Avenue. As a reminder, you've seen this information before, but we are setting the assessment rate for this calendar year for 2024 at a rate of 15 cents per $100 valuation. So, for every $100,000 of value in a home, a homeowner would pay $150 towards the PID assessment. And that is collected by the Central Appraisal District at the same time as property taxes, and then sent from LCAD to the city for staff and a future board to manage. Part of this ordinance does require a public hearing, and so if you do hear any objection to the proposed assessment rates, you will need to pass on those before we move forward with the first reading of the ordinance. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. You may stick close if there are questions.
Yes, sir.
Counsel. All right, ladies and gentlemen, council will now hold a public hearing as to Agenda Item 7.3 concerning the 2024 assessment for the Cypress Ranch PID. If anyone here is wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to the proposed assessment, or if there's any written opposition, we can read that aloud during this portion of the hearing. If anyone is to speak in opposition, you may step forward at this time. All right, seeing none, we will now ask if anyone here is wishing to step forward and speak in favor of this proposed assessment. You may do so at this time. All right, now, close the public hearing as to Item 7.3. Council has now heard a brief presentation, and we've heard the, for many of those that, and there were none opposed or in favor of this proposed assessment. So, I would now ask for a motion to consider Agenda Item 7.3. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second, Mr. McBraer? All right, any further discussion on 7.3? All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.3, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, now, moving to Agenda Item 7.4. Again, another public hearing. I'm going to have Kristen make some comments and give us a general overview, and then I'll open up the public hearing, allow for comments in favor and against, and then we can come back and ask any questions or have further discussion. Sager?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 7.4 is Zone Case 1511O. The applicant is Keshen LLC with a request to rezone property from Neighborhood Commercial in C to Auto-Urban Commercial District AC. We sent out 60 notifications, receiving zero in favor and one in opposition. The one in opposition did not provide any specific comments regarding their opposition. This property is located north of 50th, west of Plaker Avenue. Here's the notification map showing the one property who did respond in opposition. These are also the first zone cases where we've had the 400-foot notification boundary. So, you can see both the 200 and the 400-foot boundaries on this map. Here's an aerial view of the subject properties. This property is located along 50th Street, along with other businesses, additional commercial to the south, with residential to the north. The current zoning is neighborhood commercial. There is additional neighborhood commercial, auto-urban commercial, and one heavy commercial property along 50th Street with residential to the north, low density, as well as to the south, with a little bit of high-density residential in green. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the existing building on the property and the surrounding area. The future land use map designation of commercial is consistent with the request for AC zoning. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. It is appropriate adjacent to the other commercial uses and along 50th Street, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by a vote of four to four. And I will point out, historically, when the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, it required a supermajority vote of six out of seven from council in order to be approved. The Unified Development Code did not include that provision, so a supermajority vote is not required for council to approve this today. May I be pleased to answer any questions?
Kristen, maybe, let's wait. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing and let comments be made, that way we can address any questions of you and maybe the applicant at the same time. All right, so now, we will conduct a public hearing for Agenda Item 7.4. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 7.4, you may step forward at this time. All right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 7.4? You may step forward at this time. Is there an applicant, or anybody available that's in favor?
We did speak with the applicant last week. He was concerned he had missed the meeting because there's been such a large amount of time between the Planning and Zoning Commission and this hearing. We assured him it was today, January 9th, so I'm not sure why he's not here.
All right, thank you, Kristen. All right, seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition or in favor, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 7.4. Is there a motion to approve 7.4? Thank you, Mr. McBraer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, I know that there may be some questions of you and your further discussion of council. Mr. McBraer, I'll start with you.
Yes, could you go back to the photographs, east-west, north-south pictures, so we can take a look at those?
And I will say, that east view is probably not typical of what we would normally do. We are trying to show an illegal drive-through window that had been installed.
Okay, so the west view, this is what he's proposing to use, or it's currently what he's using it for?
Currently what it's being used for, mhm.
And my understanding is just to the east of it, that property is also zoned AC?
That's correct.
Correct? So, he's wanting to zone this AC similar to the one just adjacent to him, right?
Yes.
But the opposition came from the west side.
Correct.
Property owner. Is that correct?
That's correct.
When just the... And do you know what the AC property owner is using to the east? How's he using that property? I don't see it in a...
I don't, I apologize. Oh, I think it's, I believe it's a convenience store and gas station.
I think...
Or it may have been turned into an automotive repair. I apologize.
I think that's what it's used for, is automotive repair. So, there are cars parked on it from time to time. Okay. All right, thank you.
Kristen, was there a specific request for a smoke shop? Was that the original intent?
The original request that the applicant applied for was AC with a specific use for a smoke shop. There are regulations within the Unified Development Code that are a prerequisite for application. The property cannot be within 600 feet of churches and daycares, or 1,000 feet of other smoke shops. This property is within 600 feet of at least one church. So, they cannot even request the specific use, which is why the request was changed to only the auto-urban commercial, which he would need for the U-Haul rental.
And that U-Haul rental is also in violation at this time. So, he's got a smoke shop that's in violation, and a U-Haul rental business that's also in violation?
Yes. We checked with code enforcement today for an update, and my understanding is the smoke shop is closed. The U-Hauls, we're not sure. There's three trucks, three U-Haul trailers left on the property at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Martinez Garcia?
That was my comments, is that these have both been operating illegally.
Correct.
Even after we rejected them. So, that's pretty much it. I know I did drive by one day, and he had the largest trucks even sitting on the sidewalk. So, it's been a concern.
All right, Ms. Patterson Harris?
Thank you. Ms. Kristen, um, Krista, sorry. Is there a parking space requirement?
There is.
What is that?
It, with the Unified Development Code, it no longer has the kind of catch-all of 1 to 175 that it previously had for multi-tenant centers. So, it's gonna be dependent on each individual use. Generally, 1 to 300 for retail-type uses. Could be all the way up to 1 to 600, depending on the use.
What does he have?
So, for his just typical retail uses, it's more than likely gonna be 1 to 300. One space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area.
Is he meeting that?
The building would have been meeting that prior to the installation of the drive-through. He did remove spaces with the illegal drive-through, so I don't know if he is still meeting that requirement.
And I've driven this location quite often, just, I mean, in my own day-to-day business. And those trucks have been there for a while.
Almost a year.
Yeah. And we visited with him prior to today, when that was the case, and nothing has changed.
Correct.
Basically. So, in my mind, I'm going, why are we here?
If council denies the request today, since the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, he will have to wait one year before coming back.
Thank you.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I have one thing. So, we do have an active code case on this. We have issued multiple notice of violations, a citation, and depending on the council's action today, we are prepared to issue weekly citations, depending on how the meeting comes out. But we do have an active code case.
Thank you, Eric. All right, well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 7.4, please say aye. Any opposed? Please say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion fails zero to seven. All right, we'll now move to Agenda Item 7.5. Kristen, you wanna go ahead and jump in on that, and then I'll do the same thing. We'll open up the public hearing.
Item 7.5 is Zone Case 3058G. The applicant is Seventeen Services LLC for Tommy Ford. The request is to rezone from low-density, single-family SF2 to auto-urban commercial AC. We sent out 12 notifications, receiving one in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located at the corner of 50th and Upland. Here's the response map showing the one property who did respond in favor. Here's an aerial view of the subject property, vacant land to the north, west, and south, with residences to the east. The current zoning is low-density, single-family SF2. The corner immediately across 50th has already been zoned auto-urban commercial AC. The future land use plan designates the majority of the property for low-density residential that recognizes that the corner of Two Fair Affairs is intended for commercial. Here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation with the intent that the intersections be zoned commercial is consistent with the AC zoning request. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. The location is along 50th and Upland, which are both principal arterials. Staff recommended approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
All right, thank you, Sager. Counsel, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing as to 7.5. If anyone here is wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 7.5, you may step forward at this time. All right, if anyone here is wishing to speak in favor of 7.5, you may step forward at this time. All right, the public hearing is now closed as to Agenda 7, Item 7.5. Is there a motion to approve 7.5? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. All right, do we have questions of Ms. Sager on 7.5? Do we have an applicant? I guess I'll just hop back up on my soapbox, that even with the UDC and some changes, I still think it's very, very, very valuable for an applicant to show up when they have a zone case, this particular public hearing, and to speak in favor, or at least be present for council to ask questions. Ms. Patterson Harris?
Yes. And if that, and if the applicant were here, I'd ask that individual what their plans were, because I'm going through, and I'm not quite clear with that type of zoning right next to low density. Do you have an idea? Did he, did that person share with you?
It's a little bit of a unique location, because yes, you do have residences immediately next door, but they're fronting onto it, their affair. And so, I think the intent is to get the commercial zoning in place, same as what they did across the street, and get it ready to market for a future commercial use. And the Unified Development Code does have additional buffering requirements that will protect those residences to the east.
So, even with that understood, why specifically auto-to-urban commercial?
I don't know specifically, other than I think the intent is to get it ready to market for the various uses that are allowed in those districts.
Because that would give the idea of what the intent may be, but since the proponent is not here, I can't ask that question. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Patterson Harris. Sorry, I was, we were, there was a portion in here, I thought, that said they did not have a specific request or a specific use at this time. They were planning to have it changed for the future, as Ms. Sager said, but I'm looking for that. Go ahead.
Oh, I just forgot. I just forgot my thought. You stopped my brain, and when you do that...
That's what mine does all day. I'm sorry.
It'll go someplace.
So, under, Mr. Noble did ask, Ms. Patterson Harris, he inquired at the P&amp;Z if there was a plan. Mr. Gentry replied in the negative, adding, "The owner simply knows there won't be a use for residential zoning on this parcel." What is the north of that, Ms. Sager?
Auto-urban commercial.
Okay.
And that was done in 2021, I believe.
Which one, the one to the north is what again?
Auto-urban commercial, same as the request today.
According to the Unified Development Code, would that be something that would be utilized as a buffer to residential, or would it pose issues? Would it potentially pose issues to the residential?
So, under our former zoning code, we would have been very careful when it was immediately to the side rather than the rear. With the Unified Development Code, fortunately, it has the added buffering requirements. So, potentially increased setbacks, the landscape buffer yards that are gonna be required to protect those residences. So, that, you know, alleviates that concern.
Okay. That, because that was my deal. I'm thinking, maybe I'm still stuck in the old zoning process, but I just get concerned about the citizens when we want to put things. It just seemed kind of odd. And if auto were not the purpose, I wouldn't know, I mean, my, I'm concerned as to why that had to be the zone, zoning of choice.
Gotcha.
Anyway, okay. But according to UDC, there would not be an issue because of the new requirement setback, buffering?
Yes, protections in place.
Remind me again what the buffering distance would be, because it is commercial, but it is, would be adjacent to residential. So, what would be the distance?
It's either gonna be a type B or type C, so 10 to 15 foot, for the landscape buffer itself. There may be an increased setback due to it being residential as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mhm.
All right, any other questions of Ms. Sager? All right, any other discussion of council before we take it to a vote? All right, we have a motion and a second of Agenda Item 7.5. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six one. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. It is 2:31 on the 9th of January. Happy New Year to everyone. We're glad to see all these bright, shiny faces back. It's gonna be a great year, and we will see you in a couple of weeks. We're adjourned.